I'd like to welcome you all to our February 18 regular town meeting. And we will open this meeting with the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, at least the weather's not super cold this evening. We have an attendance in person at Pinalto, Tom Gibb, Ramon Reed. And on our Zoom, we have Jera Garrettson and our attorney Bookner. So thank you all for taking the time to tune in or get here. Do we have any public comments this evening, sir? All right then, do we have an attorney report?
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I do not have a report this evening.
Nothing, okay. I guess when we get to our contract, if we've got any questions, you can clarify any of that then. Okay. So now for council action, we have minutes to approve. The, I don't guess we have our February 6 work session on here. That didn't go anywhere. And that, that was our transfer title discussion. And it seemed like it's kind of, doesn't have any interest, so I don't know what. It'll take somebody bringing that up again for it to go anywhere. Okay, so January 9, we'll start with those. Uh, January 9 work session, which I think was just one page. Okay, I guess, I guess it depends on how you print it. All right. Man, I wonder if I didn't get this. There's January 20, January 16. Oh, here it is, January 9. All right, in reading through the minutes as recorded and transcribed, did anybody find any irregularities or errors that they would like to point out at this time?
I got, um, on January 9th, page 9, the bottom line. As Ramon re-stated, that the primary reason that this time still exists, it should be at this time is, is that Pittkin still exists as an incorporated town.
So the primary reason that Pittkin still exists. Okay, so take out at this.
I think that's all I have on the, on the night.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem?
Yes, ma'am.
All I have is a little typo here. It's above Ramon's comments, uh, uh, one, two, three, four paragraphs, maybe. It says the town needs to work with volunteers when they make requests. Instead of M A Y, it should be M A K E. That was, I think that was all.
Can you tell me what page that's on, please?
First page.
Yeah, just, just below the middle of the page. So the town needs to work with volunteers when they make, M A K E, is that your?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on the second page, one, two, three, maybe a fourth paragraph, that, the, the big long paragraph. Let me count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Maybe not, the ninth line down said, if they weren't agreeable to the bill comma, instead of she, I, I think it'd be good to put my name there, please.
Just put Jera talked.
Yeah, Jera might talk Jesse into donating instead of she might. It would be, if you're reading that in 20 years, it might be, have more clarification.
Yeah, it might.
And then the very, the second to the last line, the evening of the 16th. I, I'd like us to put the evening of, of February 16th, please, just for the same reason. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Jera. Okay, I think we'll set this one aside and go to the next one. And unless we get into some kind of problem, we'll just take a motion to approve all at the same time. Well, so we just did January 9, and so the next one will be January 16, I think, which is the one page one. And this was a discussion of purchasing guidelines and was, uh, I enjoyed that meeting. You weren't here? Okay, well, it went real easy, went real smooth and, and, and.
I read that one, but I don't seem to have.
Yeah, Pete, Pete was.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem?
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing on that whole page that I saw, and Sarah may have already corrected it. At the top, it says work session agenda on my, on mine, when I read through it. And it just needs to be changed to minutes. That was the only thing I saw. And she may have, Sarah, you may have already corrected that.
Okay, sounds like we're all good with that one. I'll put it up here in my stack. Now, January 20, regular meeting. Any issues or irregularities there?
On page 2, the bottom paragraph, the next to that line, the, it just needs rewording. Starting with, I guess, the third line from the bottom, where it says the town has received, or the townspeople have received, or some, uh.
So probably I just need to add a when, in regard to the bill, when people told the town has received. Okay, I have the order here, I got it.
I, I wasn't sure what it's supposed to say. Yeah, that might use a little dirty. I mean, I would hear a lot. As Jera said, somewhere down the road, somebody may read these again. Actually, periodically, for various reasons, I dig out this old stuff and look through it.
I don't have any other change.
Okay, Ed, you got anything? All right then. Yes, sir, we are ready for a motion.
Mr. Ben, I move accept eight minutes as amended for January 9, January 16th, January 20.
Okay. Ed has made a motion for the 9th, 16th, and the 20th of January. And Ramon Reed has seconded. So all in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, say aye.
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 Thank you, Jera, motion carries. Item 2 dash 2, review treasurer's report and discuss and vote to approve the 2025 disbursements. Let me dig out my 2025 dispersments, I didn't see anything there that was. Yes, go ahead, talk about the report.
I'd like to make a couple of comments on the 2024 budget versus actual. And I'm going to guess, sir, that these are probably ought to be pretty complete now, as far as.
Yes, as far as 2024, there is one thing that may need adjusting, and that would be the additions, what was left in the budget in 2024. I woke up in the middle of the night and couldn't remember if I had adjusted that, and I did not check. So I could double check that, but by far, it's a station, you got it.
Okay, so just, just a couple of things I'd like to point out for the general public. Uh, when I looked at revenues, we're $30,000 over budget last year for sales tax revenue. Thirty thousand, over $30,000 over budget. Everybody, I think everybody needs to keep in mind, uh, sales tax for the town of Pittkin really comes from three businesses in Pittkin, the Silver Blue and the something like those. So we're 160.84% over budget on some, that's, that's a huge growth. In fact, all of our revenue was actually over budget. So general fund over budget by $52,000. All budgets were over, revenue are all over budget. The one, and I think I found the answer to this, the town hall was over budget, it was $28,000, but actually was $150,000, that was for the grant, is that correct?
Right, and the grant money is not going to be dispersed.
I thought that was the case. Um, but then also in our parking wreck, 2221, over budget was for the Silver Blue Fish Line donation.
Right, right.
So, so nice, nice to get there. When I look at expenses, I'm going to make kind of this in general state of expenses. Of all of our expenses for the town for 2024, we were under budget on all the expenses.
Which is good news.
That's, that's good news. Final concern here.
You know, a lot of towns did not survive that stretch.
I agree.
Of COVID businesses as well as Pittkin did, and that has made a big difference.
We've done quite well on it, on, on our expenses. And then later tonight, we're going to talk about expense control, adopting policies, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, so thank you for the treasurer's report.
The other, I've got another one, Sarah.
Oh, go ahead.
I think this is, is on 2025. And I know she just sent out a new one, but it still looks the same way. On the 2025 budget versus actual, and I'm just, I'm going to pop over one that's easy to understand. Uh, and that's the services provided by the mayor. So we paid the mayor the $300 in January. Our budget for the year would be 3,600, so our over budget shouldn't be 3,900. Follow them?
No, I'm 100% following you. I'm just trying to find what you're looking at here, so I can.
It's on page 2 of that long one. And I think it's the import. I don't know if you have to import.
Um, okay, so that is actually not saying it's over budget. Um, you can see that the budget amount is 3,600.
Yep.
Um, that's a negative number, which means that we're over budget by negative 3,900, which means that we're under budget. The reason for that is because in January, we paid for services performed in December, and our accounting is on a pool basis and not cash. So that one can't shift up for the end of the year.
Okay, you just, I, I, I understand what you're saying though, because it's actually for December that we paid it in January.
Right. Which is why it says, when you look at the actual, it says negative $300, because that $300 that was paid in January was actually for fiscal year 2024. So it doesn't say we're over 3,900, it says that we're under, we have to say.
Okay, I, I got you. That's, that's all I had on the budgets.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think anybody else had anything on it or not. Ramon, anybody?
I don't know, it's on the, the check to the disbursements. And I assume this is probably the same problem with QuickBooks. Each one lists as a, a negative and a positive.
Right, so just, just so everybody knows, all of those of you who are looking at these reports online, we recently had to switch to QuickBooks Online. They no longer support QuickBooks Desktop, they no longer sell QuickBooks Desktop for the United States. QuickBooks Online is unpleasant. So these are coming out differently than how we're used to looking at them. But essentially, what we're looking at here, the check detail report, the top amount, that says negative however much, that's the total amount of the check. And then go to that, in some cases, there's a breakdown. So actually, if you look down at my reimbursement, you can see the total amount for the check at the top, which is $526.65, and then you can see the breakdown of what each of that was for. So $521.80 was for QuickBooks Online, and then $485 was for an IRS payment, that might be good. So that's, that's what that means, the, the different lines there.
I just have one question.
Yes.
What is the $134 for the product sign?
I believe those were plaques that were.
For?
For the cemetery, um, the remembrance plaques that they, that people can purchase to remember and swell.
I'll, I'll move to approve the disbursements presented on air.
The last thing that we got from Port Street was last month, which we paid. We have not received one since then.
So, for that.
So last month had some December snow removal and a couple days in January, so that was.
Okay.
That was split, but the check went out, that's one check. And then for this past weekend, we have not received any.
Yeah, it really come back there, okay. And then, uh, I think you addressed at least, in the email to us on the town attorney invoice.
Yes, so that's another thing, I think we should go ahead and just include it verbally in the disbursements. But once the town makes a decision on just accepting the date on terms, then I'm going to have to figure out the exact amount. Um, I imagine it's going to be very similar to what it has been, because there, there was not a permanently drastically changed salary amount, but it's over from 1999 contractor to accept employee, we're going to be pulling out some, some taxes. And so it'll slightly change the amount, I didn't have the final amount, but we still need to get that in, at least, once I figure out what that amount will be. Or we can have a special meeting.
Well, I, how do we, how do we know the number? We don't know.
So what you could potentially do is you could vote to include his fee per January in the disbursements, and I can email you the number. Or we can have a special meeting over Zoom in the next day or two, and I can tell you the number, and you can approve it at that time, whatever you prefer. I, I think a Zoom meeting would take five minutes, and that'd be easy enough to do if you all feel more comfortable with that, that's no problem.
I, I don't have a problem doing it, fine.
But you're right, we don't, we don't have the number at this moment, so that, that does make it difficult if that is something that you want to know the specifics of before you vote to approve.
I don't have, personally, I don't have a problem approving, including, including the amount on, including his invoice on time. And she can email, oh.
Yeah, I can do that.
I find that.
Okay.
And then the last question I have is, uh, we didn't get an invoice from Tom for building inspections.
Yeah.
Just a minute, Jera. I have a minute. Okay, Jera, go ahead.
Yes, I'm having, I can hear Tom and Ramon pretty well. Uh, I can't hear Ed Pinalto part of the time. And, and I'm having a little difficulty hearing Sarah at times. Maybe it's just their microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions on the disbursements? Ramon started to make a motion.
I move we approve the disbursements presented.
Did you also approve and to attorney Booker for January?
Yeah, okay, I'll amend that to include the attorney Bookner's bill, which is missing.
This is Jera, and I'll second Ramon's motion as amended.
Thank you, Jera. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the disbursements and the treasurer's report. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right. Item 2 dash 3, and I see we have a 2 dash 4 carrying right in there on the tail end of that. Yeah, it's down there, I'm going to mark this mine right through this. I, I meant to do it earlier. Okay, discuss with possible action approving a zoning change request from residential to business for 601 State Street, which as you all know is the alternative, but this item contains a public hearing. So, um, this, this action came at the request of our zoning board of adjustment. And so, uh, first thing I guess I need to ask is there confirmation of adequate public notice for this hearing? Okay, so would our applicant like to get up and say a few words? No, okay. Uh, the next item then will be discussion of front hearing. And then, just by way of how things go, um, so after the staff comments, we might want to ask Jake a few questions. And then there will be public comments, by way of public comments, by, uh, be sure you get your public comment in order, we're not, I'm going to spend 20 minutes of the public comment. Uh, we'll keep it short and sweet and limit it to one apiece. And then the applicant will get to respond to those public comments. And then the staff up here will discuss it again, and then, uh, we'll have a vote. Okay. So, staff comments, that would be us.
I'll, I'll start off.
Go ahead, Ed.
When I look at the train depot, when you look at the historical significance of the train depot in the town of Pittkin, I believe it's been here since 1881. Built back then, the train depot was the focal point of Pittkin, where all commerce came in and out of Pittkin, either from Guinness or from Denver. And then over the years, we rezoned the whole town, some in commercial, some in residential. Commercial is really multi-zoned. And so I look back to the historical significant of the train depot, perhaps back then, it should have been included, we need commercial instead of residential. I don't know what all, all Jake's plans are for the train depot. I know he did state some at our zoning board meeting, to where I think it could continue to be historical significance to the town of Pittkin, if it was rezoned to multi-zone.
Okay, thank you, Ed. All right, my turn. So I will remind you all, Ed likes history, that the Denver South Park and Pacific gave up on the Alpine Tunnel about 1910. And, uh, they continued service to Pittkin. Um, and that languished over time as things changed. And by 37, why, 1937, um, uh, there were no more train tracks, and there was no train service center out of there, neither was there any bus service or anything else. And, uh, while we do have an old building there that, as Ed pointed out, people like to take pictures of, and those that have owned it through the years have managed to maintain it in some sort of fashion. It has for the last 100 years, more or less, slightly less, uh, served as a, uh, various types of residence. The entirety of State Street serves as a various type of residences. There's no particular business on that street. So as far as an error in zoning, um, I looked up the progress of zoning and, um, zoning distinctions really kind of started in the eastern part of the United States about 1920, and they moved west rapidly. And, um, and so we wound up with lots of Colorado towns that, most of them, in fact, adopting some type of zoning to differentially differentiate between, uh, where, uh, this could be done and that could be done, and so forth and so on. Uh, the concept that there, um, was an error in zoning, I would point out that this likely, very likely, uh, since in 1939 or so, uh, tracks were gone, 37. Um, and zoning came to Pittkin. So at such time as Pittkin zoned, there was no rail service or bus service or anything happening over there at the depot, other than the fact that it still looked like a depot. Uh, it's been a residence for pushing 100 years. And, uh, it is, uh, consistent with, uh, the rest of the neighborhood up and down that street. And, um, the, um, concept that, uh, something is more profitable to do this with than to do that with is not, is not an adequate reason to change zoning. Changing zona, zoning for the benefit of one property owner, um, is not a reason to change zoning. And I, uh, after attending the meeting. And I, after attending the meeting, the zoning meeting I was at where this was discussed, I, I went home and over the course of the next few days began to look things up. And there have been in the last lots of years, no material changes in the character of the neighborhood up and down State Street. With all that, then comes up the word that gets thrown around periodically is this is spot zoning, which by definition in fact is. And the question that so spot zoning is is the singling out of a small parcel, parcel of land for use for a classification that is totally different from the surrounding area. So I'm going to say that zoning this commercial is inconsistent with the land use of the neighborhood. And and would appear to be intended solely to confer a benefit to a property owner. And not as part of a larger expansion of land use and zoning changes. So I'll quit at that.
If I may, Tom, if there is one correction that you stated, you said nothing on State Street is zoned anything but residential. Eight, all the way to 10th is zoned commercial.
You're right. I forgot State Street goes past nine. Yeah, so you are correct.
It goes all the way from eighth to 10th street. It's commercial already. Also, the property, all of the property behind the train depot.
One alley over, yes. Because that would be Main Street. Ramon, you have anything you would like to say?
Yeah. I guess I'll follow Ed in correcting because there's a lot of things said wrong about this whole thought and so I I'm probably as interested in the historical nature and the little bit that we have left of Pitten as anybody. Since I moved here 47 years ago, it's, it's been a major concern. But I don't see the what we, what we're presented here with this request for zoning change, I don't see how it really ties to the historical nature in a number of reasons. So first of all, you know, to, to correct the idea that State Street, because the depot was there and the railroad track was on State Street, the, the notion that that made it a business district is simply wrong. The if anything, you want to refer to what State Street was, it was a, a transportation corridor for the railroad period. You know, since I've lived here, I've looked at hundreds of photographs, old photographs of Pitten. And I simply can't recall a single photograph that shows a business other than the depot on State Street. None. But there was, you know, a lot of industrial work above the depot. There was what's called a coal tipple, which is prominent in some of the pictures. But, you know, that wasn't a business. It was, you know, industrial if anything. The original ticket office was not where the depot exists today. It was at the far lower end of State Street, somewhere close to the town law line, maybe even a little bit below the town line, just off of State Street. And it wasn't until I, I guess 1900 is what Jake points out. I wasn't sure of the date, but in his application, he says that the building was built in 1900. And so, you know, even, even though the railroad is a big part of history, it's a tiny part time-wise. You know, and I, I don't see any reason, you know, certainly there was not a mistake made in zoning that area as as residential instead of business because it's been residential for more than a hundred of its, of our 130-year existence. So I don't think that was a mistake. That moving into today, 2025, what I'm concerned about is the impacts that zoning this as a business property, changing the zoning to business would have. And I think there are numerous. A couple of them were brought up at the zoning board, but I'll, I'll bring up a a few. I think traffic and parking are the first two that stand out to me. You know, any business, I don't, it's hard to imagine what, but any commercial business that is designed to attract customers is going to simply increase traffic on State Street that, you know, those of us who live here already think it's too high. That particular intersection at State and Sixth Street probably costs the town more money than most of the rest of the streets, other than perhaps Ninth Street. Certainly Ninth Street is the busiest in town. But it's also been at least at one point partially paved. The potholes that exist at the intersection of State and Sixth are there every year. They get filled multiple times usually every summer and open right back up. So traffic is a problem. State Street as it exists today is, doesn't accommodate any real parking and especially if the traffic increases. You know, today when we have heavy traffic at the, at this building, what they've done for several years now is close off parking on one side of the street just so traffic can get through with parking on the other side. And I don't see any way that that, that's going to change anytime soon. Unless you want to change the entire street and make it two-lane, you know, or twice as wide or something. I know that it was suggested at the zoning board meeting that the ditch could be moved over. And I don't believe that that's correct. It, it could be, sure, but it would be a major problem because you not only need to move the ditch, you'd need to move the culvert under Sixth Street. And you know, it, it would be a big job to do that. For, for what? Maybe a half dozen parking spaces? Then, you know, beyond that, it, it's hard to imagine some of the things since the applicant didn't spell out anything that he wants to do there. And that's I guess what caused, causes me the biggest concern. I want to read something. I'll do this fairly quickly. Section seven of the current zoning code is principal permitted usage. And this is the section, this I think is about the most important section of the zoning code that we have. It basically defines in simple terms what can be done in each of the two zones that we have. Residential is basically for low-density housing and you, there's some things going with housing you can add. The business district. Here's what you can do in the business district. Any use permitted in residential, accessory buildings and uses, amusement or recreation business, automobiling or automobile gas stations or garages, automobile parking lots, clubs or lodges, dining or drinking places, hotels or motels, laundromats, offices or clinics, retail stores or shops. I think that's all. Nope, there's three more. Schools and churches, storage units, and multiple dwelling units. Without stating what, what he wants to do there, you know, it, it's hard to imagine anything that would be good and essentially a residential neighborhood, which is what it is today. And it would remain a residential neighborhood if you, even changing three lots to a business. And I don't know of many people in town that would be real happy with, that live in the residential area if suddenly right next door or across the street or close by, someone decided to put a gas station. And that's, that was the first one that stood out to me because that looked like a great location for a gas station, but I sure don't want it in my neighborhood. They, it, it's, it's simply, you know, to, to rezone this one spot. You know, I understand Jake's position as a businessman, but he ignores the, the residential aspect of the, of the town. You know, everything in his application talks about economic development and has enhancing visitor experience, increasing popularity in Pitten. Doesn't say a word about people who live here. Some of us live here because we like it here. I, I wouldn't like it if, if I, in fact, when I first lived here, I did live in a business, business district. And I moved when I got a chance to because I, I wanted to live in a quieter, you know, non-business neighborhood. So it, it just, I don't see any justification that, you know, makes me feel that this application should be granted.
I'll stop there. Thank you, Ramon. Jer, do you have anything? Did I see you with your hand up?
I I am thrilled that we're able to preserve, that the town will be able to preserve that historic site. We only have the town hall, well, the hotel, the town hall, the hotel, the church and a depot, I believe, are the only real buildings of, if I'm not wrong, I think that's right, of historical significance. And so I am excited that it could be preserved and used and the hours that I love to volunteer at the museum. And it's such a big part, I can't tell you how many times people say, oh, I'd love to be able to, to go into any of those buildings. And so I just looked at it as a real positive for the town on itself. And I know along State Street that, you know, there were also lumber, those lumber, the lumber companies that lined up there, I don't know. I'm excited about the historical aspect of it. So that's what I have to say for now.
Okay, thank you, Jer.
Tom, if I may.
Yes, please, Ed.
I'd like to go back to a couple of Ramon's comments. One of his comments, so obviously the railroad ran on State Street. And that wasn't come, I think he said it was commerce or, or it was not commercial. But that was commerce coming in and out of Pitten. So it was commercial. The railroad on State Street was commercial business through the railroad. I don't think that can be argued. I'm not sure about the ticket counter on Main Street. I've never seen anything that said the ticket.
I didn't say it was on Main. It was on State.
State Street.
Okay.
Clear at the bottom end.
The bottom end of State Street. And then I know you stated that Jake didn't say what he wants to do there. Well, I'll refer you to the zoning code on page 18 that has under section B, all that is required to request a zoning change. And in that on page 18 does not state anything about an applicant having to say what the intent is to, what type of business to put in. I understand what you read at the beginning of the zoning code of the type of businesses that are permitted. But our zoning code does not state that an applicant has to say what the intent is with that property.
That's true. I didn't, I didn't ask Jake what his business is, what he wants to put in there. I, you know, he hasn't volunteered that information. But changing the zoning doesn't specify any business, any specific business. We could change the zoning, he could still put a house there for that matter, but he couldn't put other things, anything that the code allows in the business district. And that's what I, the point I was trying to make is that, you know, we're being asked to rezone the property. And, and doing that allows it to, to be anything on that list that I, I read. And I don't think that most of the people who live in the residential district would like many of those things in their neighborhood.
All right, any other thoughts from the front? Ramon's point is valid. Once you change the zoning, it's changed. Pretty tough to change back. And then once you change the zoning, then all of those things that are doable in commercial or residential are allowable in that zoning. So there's that. Anything else up here? Okay, then we will open this up to public comments. Please think about what it is you're going to say. Let's not dwell too long here. I don't want to spend 10 minutes per comment. Anybody got anything they'd like to say? Anybody got anything they'd like to say?
Just sharing a couple of thoughts. Very thankful that I have, obviously, I'm gonna be sharing my thoughts, but we cut to where we knew that. But Jake, did you change anybody's mind? I sense a certain amount of hypocrisy.
Cannot hear.
A little louder, please.
Okay, just sharing my thoughts about the issue in front of us. That I sense a little bit of hypocrisy on your part, Tom, because I know that you've been applied to reason a piece of property in the past too.
That's right.
Short there, so. The other thing I want you to think about, Ramon, there's always the option that he picked that building up and moved it to the piece of property and he's got his own commercial. And you express an interest that you have in preserving historic buildings in town. I don't know how you would feel about that.
If, if that, no, I will answer that because I've talked, I've thought about that and I've talked to people about it. And if, if the depot, if it were proposed to move that building to another location in town, I would be all for it. Frankly, I think it's a historic building. I see nothing historic about the site. I, I'll tell you, I would be very disappointed if it was moved out of town.
Okay, okay. But, but Mr. National speak. This is public comments, not question and answer. Thank you, Chris. Mr. Herman.
I'm gonna direct this to Ramon. Now, since I've been living here, many times I had conversations with you guys about preservation of Pittkin and historic buildings. You, you guys approached me once about putting a plaque on my barn and restoring it back to its original condition. And here, now we have a man here that stepped up to the plate and laid some hard earned money down on that place and has the financial means to plead that into something really nice for the town. And you guys are gonna knock it down and tell them you can't do it? And I don't think Jake's gonna put anything up there that is gonna be obtrusive or, or in any way make the noise problem in the town. And you spoke about the traffic problem over there. Well, since the hotel, the advent of the hotel being restored. And we have all these customers coming in now from Crestview, Gunnison, Montrose. I have seen zero problems for me going up and down the street. I don't think traffic is gonna be a problem with that over there regarding the size of the building. I think, I think we ought to push forward on this and have Jake restore that place and, and put a little, whatever he's gonna do in there, a sandwich shop or, I don't know what his plans are, but I don't think it's gonna be anything that's gonna devalue State Street in any way.
Thank you, Ed.
Sitting aside the spot zoning issue and some of the things that could occur on that property, I think that something that ought to be considered is a reevaluation of zoning districts in the community. There has been some positive economic growth in the community. We can see in the revenues in the town, it's a good thing. But with growth comes problems. And this is one of them. Because if something does commercially occur at that corner, it's gonna have a greater impact on the community. And the current zoning regulations make no provisions for commercial development to mitigate those impacts. And primarily, I'm talking about off-street parking as well as dealing with the whole of the site. And typically, in most communities, there's a central business. And I think you would find that to be down on Main Street, because they may be a two or three block span. Okay? And in most communities that I've had experience with, railroad depot typically is owned industrial because it's a center of industrial development. Businesses that are served, that have an industrial nature are served by that railroad. It doesn't bring passengers, it brings commerce. But it's not a commercial area. But my thought is the town should have the commercial district as it's written, basically applying to the central business district. I think there should be a second commercial, something called C one through there that lists some, some reasonable small business users, but also provides requirements for off-street parking, traffic mitigation, and things like that. So I think the point I'm trying to make prior to here, I think, is that we're having growth in this community. It's not necessarily a bad thing. But if you look at some of the commercial growth, the hotel, for example, I've got down Main Street and where I'm gonna rear end somebody's car sticking out on the street. There's a lack of planning, lack of regulation with the parking adjacent to that, that business. That's, that's a deficiency in the zoning code, in my opinion. Not personal offense, but it generates a great deal of traffic up at the top end of town. And the impacts, well, first of all, if you try to drive through that intersection in the summer, you really gotta be on your toes. Because the traffic control there is fiddable. And it's up to the discretion of the tourist in the community, whether they want to observe it. The other impact is the degradation of Ninth Street because of the traffic generated by successful business. That's not a bad thing, but there's an impact there. Certainly, I think there's an opportunity, town and the businesses, we had to collaborate here and figure out how can the town enable some of this to go forward and so the impacts would mitigate. And I, I think, you know, both Tom and Ramon have very good arguments about why that should not be so commercial. But I think this commercial zoning right now probably shouldn't be to make an opportunity if you look forward. Think how can we mitigate the potential impacts of development of that property other than the community? That's my comment. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, P.
Suzie has a comment on mine.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me? No, you can't.
Yes, ma'am.
You can't hear me. Okay. I just feel like the parking is, is really, there's not space there for parking on the property or around there at all. It would, when you mix in the summer traffic and the four-wheeler traffic and the bicycle traffic and the motorcycle traffic, if you mix all that in there together and then try to park anywhere near the depot, if that were opened as a business, that would be a real issue. And that's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
I have a letter of the town received.
Okay.
So the letter received, or the town received a letter from Michael and Judy Chappell at the meeting. They reside at five twenty-seven State. Says, Mayor, given work in Pittkin, we've been informed that there is a motion to make our State Street and or Sixth Street rezone for commercial use. As we are the property owners on State and Sixth Streets, we are totally against this motion. Mike Chappell, Judy Chappell.
Mr. Mayor, Pro-Tam, I don't know if other people are having a hard time hearing Sarah, but I could not hear.
Would, would you like her to read that again?
Yes, please.
Okay, Sarah, a little closer. Would you like me to read it? I can get right up here on this microphone. Okay, this is from Michael and Judy Chappell.
Chappell?
Chappell. Very good. Thank you. And they reside at five twenty-seven State Street, Pittkin, Colorado. So, Mayor, given the board of Pittkin, we have been informed that there is a motion to make State Street and or Sixth Street rezone for commercial use. As we are the property owners on State and Sixth Streets, we are totally against this motion. Mike Chappell and Judy Chappell. Jake, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just quickly, do you want to close the public hearing before Jake responds?
Okay.
Okay.
What did she say? Did you close?
Do you want to close the public hearing and then let him respond, or is this part of the public hearing?
No, this is, we'll still stick, so Jared's waving her hand, looks like. Somebody is there.
It's, it's Jesse who would like to speak, if possible.
Well, we're, we're still on public comments. Go ahead, Jesse.
Thank you. I have several comments and some quotes. And as a resident of State Street, I don't believe there is too much traffic, as Mr. Reed quotes. And what are streets for, except for traffic? And after all, State Street is eighty feet wide. And if we move the ditch closer to the property line of State Street, the culvert on Sixth Street does not have to be moved, Mr. Reed. It can tie right into it. So those are not valid questions or answers. Spot zoning, it is not spot zoning. Right across Alpine Lane is business district. We lived on State Street for thirty-five years in the middle of a business zoned street with zero problems of traffic and or problems of commingling with the business. In our zoning board meeting, when we met and discussed this topic, people from the audience thought we ought not just stop with the three lots that the depot are on, but we ought to go all the way to Ninth Street. Eighth to Ninth is already zoned commercial or business. Another person I'd like to quote is Mrs. Reed, thought it'd be nice if Todd Adams would put a engine across the street on his personal property to tie it in with the nostalgia and the history of Pittkin's depot. I also would like to quote John Wise. John Wise told me that it's a no-brainer. The depot was the hub of all the business going in and out of Pittkin for years. So it's a no-brainer. Grandfather it in and, and have it done. Another quote I'd like to make is our previous mayor, Mrs. New, said, what can we do to help our residents obtain their goals and desires, rather than what can we do to hinder them? So from my perspective, and even if it generates some income to Pittkin, so much of our budget, way over half, is supported by sales tax. So when we vote down any kind of a increased mill levy and keep making more and more demands from our town treasury, how are you gonna balance the books? If there is zero problem of commingling business with residential. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. If there are.
We had two additional comments online.
Oh, thank you.
One person is Suzie, and the other person, I don't know, so they'll need to identify themselves when they speak.
Okay, it's Jenny Ginger. I'm the other person. Earlier in the meeting, there was a mention of how the town survived COVID. And I know at that time, there probably weren't a lot of businesses. But I think something like the restoring of the train depot could draw people in to help get through a struggle like that in the economy. And also, I just want to say I'm so appreciative of anyone with the means that has a vision and financially can support the restoration of the hotel or the train depot. I just think it's so wonderful. These buildings are just gonna waste away before we know it, and there's not gonna be anything left of the past and the history. Those are my thoughts, and thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. All right.
She lives up there by the.
All right, is that it for our public comments then?
No, Suzie, Matt Slatter, and Jim Fisher. So Suzie, go ahead, and then Jim.
Yeah, keep it short, Suzie.
Okay, it's just that Jesse said they lived for thirty-five years on State Street, but they lived part of the year probably for thirty-five years on Main, actually, before they ended up on State. I just wanted to mention that because Jesse accidentally said that. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, and then our next public comment is.
Jim, Jim Fisher, go ahead.
Hi, this is Jim down on three oh two First Street. I was just wanted to let everybody know that I am a hundred percent okay with this. I know that Mayor may not have any weight with the town, but I think it'll help bring revenue to town and just help the town overall. We, Lord knows, we need the money. Maybe it would help give us enough money one day to actually put a sewer system in. So anyway, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Jim.
That's it for online.
Okay. We are going to move on then. I think everybody's spoken. To the applicant response. You were trying to get up there, Jake, so you're the applicant and you get to talk now.
Close, close the public.
Yeah, so yes, we're closing public comments.
You're autistic.
Jake Scholberg, train depot owner, so there's, there's been a lot said.
Speak up, please. Speak up, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. I'll see if we can pull some money together and get you some hearing aids. She didn't think that was funny. So, yeah, I appreciate the kind words from people and I never thought I would do this. So and, you know, when you deal, when you end up in a situation like this, you think you're an idiot for doing it. But there were so many things said, and I didn't write anything down because I guess I'll come up with a plan regardless. But as far as Ramon said, there were not businesses on State Street. I think Jared pointed some out. I know that the forge that used to be on Chuck's place, that was actual, an actual business almost across the street from the depot. And I've definitely seen photos of other businesses on State Street. Parking was brought up and the flow of traffic. Parking is definitely not an issue. I, well, before I go to parking, maybe I'll talk about, nothing was said as far as what we planned to do with it. And I believe I did mention that at the zoning board meeting, so if you had read through those, I don't, I assume it would have been on there, that although we didn't have like any concrete plans, the. any concrete plans, the idea of a nice coffee shop, you know, the the plan is, I think Ramon and Tom and everyone knows the, the plan is to restore it back to what it was like originally. And uh that means the floor plan. Uh, they had added some bedrooms and all that's gone. The bathroom's gone. Um, because I, I believe that it should be original. Uh, if it's going to hold any historical significance. And uh, so the idea was, well, what can you do in that historical building? Um, and you could, you could make it a house and an Airbnb. And I believe I mentioned this at the zoning board meeting, that it doesn't give the depot the credit that it deserves because only a very limited amount of people will get to experience it. You'll have to rent the place. And if you can uh turn it into what I said back then, I believe I said a coffee shop, if you had the idea of a coffee shop, now people can come grab a coffee, walk around, look at all the historical near uh memorabilia that will probably be in there, and uh sit on the porch and drink coffee, whether it's you know, in the morning, and some people drink coffee in the afternoon, so uh, that was kind of the thought. But moving on to parking, um, I, I mean, you guys make it sound like we're going to be as busy as the Supercenter Walmart. And that's just not the case. I mean, you're going to have some traffic there. Would would there ever be more than ten cars at a time or ten side by sides? I think that would be very rare. Um, and you could park all those on the current property. And uh, you seem, everyone seems very paranoid about the flow of traffic and the parking, and I just don't think it's an issue. If you think Pittkin has traffic problems, you should drive to Denver and uh experience that. Um, so the parking, it, it's, it's just an non-issue and a simple solution. Um, trying to think if there are other things that you had questions about or, or uh were concerned about. And if you have some other questions you want to ask me, you can. Oh, I was going to point out um, you know, I think Ramon and Tom were the, are the most concerned about it for, as far as the trustees go. And uh you know, I, I, I'm in Pittkin because I appreciate the value I can bring to Pittkin from the perspective of people from all around the United States and the world coming to experience it. Just the fact that I don't believe either of you have ever spent time at the Stumbling Moose to you know, getting to, getting to know these summer visitors. Um, you, I don't think either of you appreciate it. You want the town to yourself and uh you want to spend the tax dollars the way you see fit. So we have a difference of opinion there, and uh you're not going to change my mind and I'm not going to change yours. But I, I struggle with a couple of things, one of which is the, the Board of Trustees does not have one town business owner on its board. It's just a bunch of retired people. And that does not benefit me when I'm one of the people contributing the most to the town of Pittkin from a tax perspective. And so I'm allowing people to make the decision that really don't have an interest in seeing the town prosper, but uh, this is the process, and uh I'll respect the board's decision.
Okay. Any discussion from the board at this time?
Ramon, have you been in? Jer? Yes, I do.
Uh, blow, blow your little ladder, what?
I do, but I, I'd allow Jer or Ramon or yourself to say anything first.
I can.
So he wants to let you go or Jer go first? He has something to say, but he would let you or Jer go first?
Go ahead.
I'm not, Jer, do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, I was going to say before, uh, when I spoke, and then I forgot. Just the fact that I also thought during this process, uh, I just was thinking it was really exciting, the timing with the opening again of the Alpine Tunnel Trail. Uh, because that ties in so significantly with the historic Pittkin Depot and uh so I appreciated the timing of it. I just, I just think it's important to our town. I actually do think it has great historical significance and is one of the most palpable visual things uh in town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jer. Anything, Ramon?
Not right now.
Ramon has nothing? All right, Ed?
All right. So this is Ed. I'm greatly disturbed by some of the actions going on currently. I know Tom and Ramon were at the zoning board meeting and have expressed tonight, when they came into the meeting, all the reasons why we should not approve a zoning change for the depot. Jessie brought up something that, that I wanted to bring to light, and that was back in the zoning board meeting. The zoning board approved by a vote of four to nothing the motion to bring to the Board of Trustees was to make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to accept a petition for Mr. Schellberg with the depot and add to that not only depot's lots being commercial, but also the mountainside of State Street all the way up to Ninth. So Sixth Street to essentially Eighth Street. It was seconded, and that motion carried four to zero. On the January twentieth meeting of a Board of Trustees meeting, I started to make a motion that said specifically what the zoning board had said, and that motion was to allow or to recommend Board of Trustees pass the rezoning for the depot, and then all the way from Sixth Street to Eighth. I was corrected while I was making that motion by Sarah, saying that I couldn't do that because if I'd read the zoning code, it says that I'd have to have a new packet for the Sixth to Eighth Street. Well, I'll refer to the zoning code. And, and it says under amendments, zoning change requests, that official zoning map or zoning code may, may be initiated by an application of the Board of Trustees, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and any citizen group, firm, or corporation residing owning property or leased property without a bid. Jake Schellberg made that initial application. The zoning board added to that application Sixth Street to Eighth Street, and I was not allowed to make that motion, bringing it to the Board of Trustees. That raises some real questions for me because I did a little bit of research. A little bit of research that on September twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, Tom and Galen Gibb brought forth to the zoning board meeting a recommendation for a zoning change request for two oh two Armstrong. And the discussion went on at the zoning board. Nothing stated what they wanted to do with the property, they're just a rezoning change request. And it was discussed by the zoning board at that time. The zoning board said these particular lots are complicated by Armstrong gulls. They need to be added into the adjoining zoning, so some use can be made out of that which is pregnant. The zoning board then went on to make a motion to recommend approval of the Gibb request for rezoning to the Board of Trustees, and recommend the Board of Trustees consider rezoning all of the lots northwest of Main Street. Business made by zoning board member Roger Lowell seconded. Motion carried four to zero. That was in September of twenty twenty-two. October tenth, Board of Trustees meeting, it was on the agenda to discuss the vote on adopting the ordinance twenty twenty-two, uh, adopting the zoning code by reference, that included the public hearing. That was for the property two oh two Armstrong. At that time, of course, Tom nor Galen brought up any of the comments Tom brought up tonight about why it might have been spot zoning or other things should have been added to that area as far as what the initial request was, which I was shot down for in my motion. And that motion changed the zoning code for Armstrong passed five to zero that night. Interesting enough, on October eleventh, the Gibbs sold that property. Something smells.
Thank you, Ed.
I respond to that.
All right, go ahead.
Ed, you know, picking out half a sentence as justification for what you want to do doesn't cut it, frankly. In what, in what ways? Let me finish. Yes, it does say that an amendment to the, and a zoning change request can be initiated by application of and includes the zoning board of adjustment. It also go down to the bottom of the page. Zoning change requests and amendments, which is what you want to do from the zoning board, to the official zoning map shall be made in writing and filed with the town clerk. The request shall contain the following information and diagram as a minimum. Read on from there. You've got it in your hand. Is any of that included in what you gave to the town board, or even what you discussed at the zoning board meeting with no public knowledge of this? Explain to me, Mr. Reed, why none of that was done back in September of twenty twenty-two or October twenty twenty-two? I'm talking about tonight, what I'm being asked to do. Prescidence was set when this was done. And it smelled awfully fishy that the Board of Trustee member at that time would try to get his zoning change, sell the property the following day that it first, and then tonight come into the meeting with the guns loaded on all the reasons why we should not approve this. It smelled bad. So if we have reasons, we shouldn't approve it, we shouldn't state them? Come on, Ed. I'm not saying you should. You've talked about. I'm not saying you shouldn't. You just complained about- Okay. Kid. Gentlemen, please. Um, I'm getting tired of this crap that I'm hearing because you want to pick out certain things, you sit there saying that you want to treat everybody in town the same, and that's the last thing that you do, and I'm tired of it. That's not true at all. Okay. All right. So I see our staff response is uh uh-huh, recent impasse here, we seen? So at this time, uh, we will take a vote on whether or not to approve this application for zoning permit change. I'll make a motion first, that's all we need to do. Okay. I move that we accept the zoning request change for Mr. Schellberg for the Train Depot and six oh one State Street. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Inato, who accept the zoning board change made by Mr. um Schellberg for six oh one State Street. Do I have a second?
This is Jer, and I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we want to vote individually, or do we just want to say aye, aye, and nay, nay? I request a roll call vote. A roll call vote. Where would you like to start? Clerk, we call the roll.
Uh, we'll start with trustee Jared Garrison.
Okay. Trustee Jared Garrison, how do you vote?
This is Jer. I vote aye.
Trustee Ramon Reed.
I vote no.
May I approach Tom Gibb?
I vote no.
Trustee Ed Inato?
When I call you? Vote aye.
Motion does not carry.
All right. On my agenda item, let's see what we've got next here. Ah. Okay, discuss with possible action, approving a liquor license renewal for the Stumbling Moose Lodge located at one hundred Second Street. Now, uh, this doesn't have to be done till sometime in July, but sooner just as good as later, I suppose, right? Sometime in May. I'm two months off, I'm sorry. Well, all right. Um, any discussion from the front, and then we'll take public comments, and then we'll uh move on from there.
This is Jer. I have a question. May I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
I wonder if there have been any complaints turned in, please? Regarding this issue?
Any complaints regarding the Stumbling Moose?
Yes, that, that yes, ma, yes, sir, that would uh uh concern renewing this liquor license. Were there any complaints? Written, turned in, or whatever?
Um, there was-
You know, this case?
There was an issue, um, I don't recall though whether it was before or after the last renewal that had to do with the modification of premises.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear, I cannot hear Sarah, sorry.
She cannot hear and just say in the meeting, our policy states that she cannot just say in the meeting.
That needs to be moved out of pushing.
Can, can you use Tom's microphone, please? I always can hear Tom and Ramon, and mostly Ed. I just can't understand Sarah.
Good voice.
I don't recall when this happened. It may have been after or before the last renewal, but there was the issue of modification of premises without an application, and that I believe was dealt with at the state level.
Explain that.
Can you elaborate? I'm, I'm not, and I, and I can hear you better that last time, Sarah, but can you elaborate, please?
What would you like to know?
Was there a written requi, a written complaint, or I didn't quite understand your verbiage?
No written complaint.
I'm, I'm, no, the, the town did not receive, the town received emails and phone calls from the state. I, I was, I can look, but I, I don't have this information at the ready to answer this question. I do believe you were a trustee at the time, though, Jer.
I think that was before the last-
It might have been. I don't recall.
And, and did you say this was a question from the state, or what did you say?
Um, she said there was a question regarding modification of premises, and that question was dealt with by the state.
Oh, yes, I do remember that. Yeah, so that wasn't like a complaint local. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion from the front? All right, we're gonna go for public comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Well, okay then. Uh, at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of a renewal of the liquor license at the stumbling Moose.
This is Ed. I'll make a motion that we approve retail liquor license renewal for the stumbling Moose Lodge.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
This is Jara and I'll second it.
Thank you, Jara. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve uh, a license renewal, liquor license renewal for the stumbling Moose Lodge. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to our new um, our, our attorney has experienced a slight change in job description apparently. And, uh, there's a little trickle-down effect from that, and I read through um, the employment agreement, and this is slightly different than the last anything I've read regarding a, um, slightly different, but not hugely. Is there, um, first of all, is there any questions from the front and then we'll ask Mr. Brookman? Um, who I'm sure has seen this.
He, he wrote it.
He wrote it, yeah. Okay. Any questions from the front?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protam? But is this, my question is just, uh, is this mostly a housekeeping thing?
Well, uh, in some ways it is, but our attorney has, um, upped the ante on his jobs and he has a little more responsibility than he used to. And so rather than his previous status, he is now moving into an employment agreement is the way I understand it. So there'll be, uh, a few changes there regarding uh, when and how he's paid and so forth. Is that correct, uh, Sarah?
That's my understanding. Attorney Bookmaster probably gave a little more information on the detail of the change.
Yeah, so the long and short of it is because of, of my employment with uh, La Plata County as the deputy district attorney, the sta- statute says I can, I cannot practice private law. And while even as an independent contractor, I am a local government attorney and probably don't qualify as a, uh, private attorney in that capacity, the payment mechanism in my contract would conflict with that, and so I just don't want to find myself in the future trying to explain that to the IRS or to, um, you know, a defense attorney trying to appeal my, um, you know, one of my prosecutions because they think I'm, you know, violating the statute, and so I'm doing some administrative changes and, and part of that is asking my towns, I represent five towns, Coal Creek, um, Pickin, Peonia, Peonya, Pickin, and West Cliff and Silverton. And I'm asking all of my towns to switch me over to a part-time employment position, much like what is required statutorily for judges. Um, it's up to you all whether you want to put me on a salary or to continue hourly, I'm requesting just to go to a salary to make it easy on staff and myself as far as budgeting and invoicing and payments, et cetera. But that's something we could discuss, um, more with the board. Uh, the law, again, the, the reason I'm doing that is because I I can still continue to practice, um, in the function of a local government attorney because it's not considered private practice, and so this is a step to make that uh, to make the payment and the agreement match what I'm doing versus uh, what we have currently, which is an independent contractor agreement.
Okay, so let me get this. So you can be an employee, but you can't be a private attorney or contractor?
The statute says I can't practice private law.
Yeah.
And while I, while I don't think this is the practice of private law, I want to, I want to make it, I want to make certain, because that seems like a gray area that I'm in right now, the way that we have it structured.
Okay, so, but this change to, uh, an employment agreement in no way restricts you from, uh, giving advice or acting on behalf uh, legally for anything that this council would.
No, not at all. It, I mean, a lot of towns have in-house employee, employees uh, for council. Uh, this, I would be waiving all benefits, et cetera, from the town. Um, and I would continue to do everything the same way that I've done it in the, in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Brookman. Any questions, guys?
I, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, the first one is, is in the agreement, uh, the compensation and payments. Are, are you asking that we stay with the current rate of nine hundred a month? Or by hour of, what are you looking for?
Oh, I'd like to, if we could, I'd like to, we can discuss it, um, as part of contract negotiation and executive session, or we can discuss it in public meeting, however you'd like to do it, but I'd like to negotiate an annual salary if the board was willing. It'll save me time and invoicing staff time and just go to a bi-weekly, um, you know, payment.
So an annual salary commensurate, more or less, with what you have, uh, been receiving is that in the same ballpark or those things in the same ballpark?
Yes, sir, yeah, I'm not asking, it's not a chance for me to try to increase my income from the town, it's just simply, uh, restructuring and I want to work with the town to
New structure, okay.
historical payment and, and make it fair for everyone.
The, another question that I have is under exhibit A, because I don't know what the contract looked like prior. Uh, but under exhibit A, attend all regular town board meetings whenever possible via Zoom. Uh, I, I, I put a question mark on it whenever possible because I feel with where we're at with the board of trustees that it's critical that we have our town attorney uh, via Zoom at a minimum at all of our board meetings. Uh, and I think over the last year, I haven't gone back and looked, I think there were a couple of board meetings that uh, you weren't able to attend. Uh, and then I do see three times a year or per request of the board of trustees in-person meeting. Uh, I would, I would love to see be able to attend three times a year at a minimum on a board of trustees meeting.
Right, so this, this agreement is, um, just like a starting point, is a template, you all are you know, this isn't like a take it or leave it thing, I want the board to discuss and put in whatever terms and conditions they think is appropriate. You all can decide whether or not you keep, uh, certain requirements, you can put in uh, deliverables that you can require and, you know, we can, there's already a clause for annual review. Um, so you can evaluate my performance, you can put in deliverables, you can make it whatever you want, this is just a starting point, um, kind of like a, a blank template if, if to, to start from.
Um, well, okay, so just to follow up your own Ed's question, because, uh, we do like to, we do like to see your face in person.
Yes.
Um, and so with, uh, lodging and travel expenses and, and so forth, um, would you be in a position, uh, to come visit us two or three times a year?
Absolutely, uh, and I think what you'll see, if you do the math, I'm pretty sure that's a windfall gain for the town for travel, because all I'm asking for is for um, accommodations and mileage, whereas in before you were paying me an hourly.
Oh, that's right, I did remember.
Um, I don't remember what it was, I, it was a significant discount for my time. Um, but it was, you know, I think it was three hundred, four hundred dollars or something like that round trip, and I don't think I'd even come close to that with mileage and a per diem. So I'm only, I'm asking for every county in Colorado has a rate, um, and then GSA and the, and then there's a GSA rate uh, that they submit for government travel per diem. So I would just asking for you know, government standard, which isn't, you know, it isn't a get rich quick scheme. But I do thi- you know, I think it's fair and, and it, and it would be significant savings at least on my travel. Um, and that's something you could put into the agreement too, that, you know, that you'd expect me to make it you know, try, try yearly or quarterly, whatever, whatever it is. Um, with the understanding that every once in a while I'll be, the times that I've missed have probably been when I'm either out of country, which are very rare, or travel, or doing something with the military that I couldn't miss, and again, those are rare, I, um, there are certain times that I have to miss, but they're few and far between.
Yeah. Um, do we have a timeframe here that we need to get this finalized by?
I'd like to do it before April. Because I'm on, I'd like to get it squared away before April because that's when the new tax year starts.
I couldn't hear that. Yeah, we didn't say that one more time, before when? Before April.
Sir, yeah. So like, you know, if we can get, if we can get it squared away at the March meeting, that would be good for me.
Excellent.
I, I, if I could suggest, I think we probably need to have a work session to go through the contract, um, I can present some numbers that would be consistent with what we're paying now, um, with Attorney Bookmaster being a contractor and I, I think the town needs to have a work session. And I also, um, Attorney Bookmaster, if I could ask then for January, can we just continue paying you as a contractor for that month so that we can get you paid? And then once we switch over to this new contract, then start the um, the employee payments?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm also happy to just get this in place and then just get back pay. Um, but however you want to do it.
One or the other, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense to me to just back pay me through, starting January, so that your budget is clean.
Okay, that, that's what we'll plan on doing, and we'll plan on getting this squared away and ready to go in at the March meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brookman.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Um, Jara, what's kind of dates are good for you? I don't have any plans between now and the next month.
Okay, um.
That I know of.
Next week? It's fine, if you want to try for next week, the, the first week of March.
The what, third week?
First.
Oh, okay.
First, the first week of March, maybe that would give you a little bit of time to prepare. Does that work for everybody?
Uh, I think so.
And there's, there's no other meetings that week, so.
Ed, you're good with sometime in the first week of March?
Week of March third?
Yes. Okay.
And, and you'll send us out a date at some point at a time?
We can, we can pick it now.
Oh, we can pick it now.
Should we just wait on Monday, March the third?
The third works for me.
Okay.
I'm gonna write it down.
Okay.
What time do you want to do it?
Uh, sixty, that works great.
I couldn't understand what Sarah said, but the third works for me, but I didn't hear the time, Sarah.
Six thirty is what she said.
Okay, thank you. That'll be fine.
Okay, um, do you want to go ahead and vote to table this item until?
Yes, um, so I'll entertain a motion to table this item for the work session.
I'll second it.
Okay.
You made it.
Yeah.
You made the motion.
Well, I guess I did my suggestion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Ed's gonna make the motion, Jara's gonna second it. All in favor of tabling this for the work session, say aye.
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 Okay. We have one last thing before we hit updates, planning and discussion. Um, which is a approving a spending policy for the town, and my understanding is this was for commissioners? Or was this just in general for any voluntary, I don't know. Purchasing guidelines for appointed commissioners, yes, that's what it said, all right. Everybody read through this? Has everybody had a chance to do this? And then.
Spending policy.
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Mister. Miss, Mr. Mayor Protam?
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I have to, I'm, you can continue if you want to, but I'm wondering if we could table this? I have to start some medication right away, a procedure, uh, you know, I, I mean, a pre-med procedure, and I, I'm not gonna be able to stay in the meeting very much longer at all. Could we table this, please, or not?
It's actually going.
I'm gonna agree with you.
Jared, can you?
Okay. All those who, who are okay with tabling this too?
Have a motion, Josh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's have a motion.
I'll move to table the purchasing guidelines until our next meeting.
I'll second it, this is Jara.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling this till our next meeting, say aye.
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 All right, very good.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome, Jara. We're glad you're doing better. Okay, updates, planning and discussion. Uh, the board of trustees, I mean, the board of trustees. The zoning board, um, has been working. Have, have you got this thing ready to s- hand off to us at some point?
No.
No, not yet.
No, we've got, um, on the zoning code revisions.
Yeah.
Um, uh, we, I will, we probably will pass through in March meetings.
Okay.
I mean, meetings with you, but maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot about that, okay. Um, okay, so what else am I missing here in this planning, updates and discussion? Nothing, okay. And we've got a work session scheduled. And then, uh, it is suggested here under updates that we pursue somehow once again enforcement, municipal courts and enforcement, municipal courts and business like. Um, that's a work session and I'm not particularly ready to schedule that immediately after we've already got one scheduled. Um, any thoughts?
Doesn't seem to me that the the first part of it, you know, this, uh, the attorney's thing should take very long. I, I don't see why we can't do more than an item.
Well. Yes, Ed, you, uh, B, you may say something.
Well, I'm talking about the spending policy and having here, here in person, possibly do that on March third. I mean, I'm gonna be on at the middle of March.
I, I, but the third will work for you.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right.
So you want me to add spending policies in that agenda? For the third work session?
You know what, um, I'm good with that. Anybody else have any objections?
We'll only be able to discuss it.
Yeah. No, we can discuss it and, uh, at the next meeting that we will have already hashed it out.
I, I see some corrections to be made on the table and such.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, gotta flip to the back, um. Okay, I guess the, uh. Reports are all in writing somewhere. I hope you've all gotten a chance to read them.
I just have a quick report. We'll be doing a budget amendment in March, um, for Parkston Rec.
Oh, that's right.
That, that, we have it done for several years and so I, I forgot that it needs to be noticed. And we did not notice for that tonight, but it'll be ready.
In March, okay.
Because we take this week out of last year's, then we couldn't. Allow that money for this year to open this bed.
Alright.
Tell me one, one thing I'd like to point out in the reports. For our March meeting and that with Jesse Garrett's request. To be in the March, on the March agenda. So he can explain what he, what his plan is for the streets and ditches. I mean, we. Discussed heavily about commissioners giving us communication. I'd like to make sure he is on it.
Alright, March agenda Jesse wants to be on. And what heading will we put that under?
Um. Streets ditch update.
Is it?
Oh, it has to be. And, and it needs to be a discussion possible. Take action on any of his plans because we're asking him. We've asked all the commissioners to come up with a plan for us. And he may need an approval to get some of the bids, quotes or whatever he needs to do. Or maybe push up out the bid.
Okay, well, this is, yeah, this is slightly newish.
I'd rather be proactive.
Yes. Okay, Sarah, can we do that?
Yes.
Alright, we'll get him on. Alright, is there any other business we need to do tonight?
No.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move through adjourn.
This is Jara and I second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jara.
Thank you. Aye.
Good evening, guys.